I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our regular board meeting. We have with us this evening Pastor Dwayne Smith from Lighthouse Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation. And I see that we have some Boy Scouts here with us this evening, and I would like to ask after the invocation if the Boy Scouts, and you can stand where you are, if you would be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I think that's very important. We always encourage that participation. So at this time, if you all will, please rise. We'll have our invocation by Pastor Smith, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, led by the Boy Scouts.
Before we pray, I would like to once again, as I did the last meeting, just take a moment to read a passage of scripture if I may. Tomorrow being the Elation Day, it's very important that we realize that government is ordained by God, is an institution ordained by God to control society, to control the evils of society, and to maintain that we as citizens of America, of our nation, of our communities, that we submit ourselves to the government that God has ordained over us. So the Word of God says this in Romans 13, "Every person is to be in subjection to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except for God, and those which exist are established by God. Therefore, whoever resists authority has opposed the ordinance of God, and they who have opposed will receive condemnation upon themselves. For rulers are not a cause of fear for good behavior, but for evil. Do you want to have no fear of authority? Do what is good, and you will have praise from the same. For it is a minister of God to you for good; but if you do what is evil, be afraid, for it does not bear the sword for nothing. But it is a minister of God, an avenger, who brings wrath on the one who practices evil. Therefore, it is necessary to be in subjection, not only because of wrath, but also for conscience' sake; for because of this you also pay taxes. For rulers are servants of God, devoted themselves in this very thing, render to all what is due them, tax to whom taxes do, cuss them to whom cuss them, fear to whom fear, and honor to whom honor." Let's pray to God. Our Father God in heaven, we do come before you tonight, and we are beholden to your glory, and we're beholden to your sovereignty, beholden to your holiness. And we come before you tonight in need of people. We need your wisdom. We need your guidance. We need your protection. And Father, we pray for our nation. We pray for the leaders of our nation. We pray for all of those in civil authority. We pray for our Congress, and our Senate, and our state legislatures, our governors. We pray for our court system. We pray, Father, for a sound government. Father, we acknowledge, as we just read from your word, that government is ordained by you to control the evils of society, and it is ordained by you that we are to obey, and also commanded by you, that we are to obey those that have a rule over us and submit ourselves to the ruling authorities that you have placed over us. But Father, we also ask that our ruling authorities realize that when they are elected to an office, that they have an also responsibility, and that is that they are to rule with godly wisdom, and they are to rule with submission to you as God that is sovereign over all things. And Father, we acknowledge your greatness and your sovereignty. We acknowledge that salvation only comes to those that repent and trust in Christ as Savior. And we acknowledge you, Father, as being the holy God, and the sovereign ruler and creator of this universe. In the mighty name of Jesus, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, I do have one addition to our agenda, and that is before you, and the addition would be item B and C, which would go under New Business, and that is consideration of acceptance of a donation from Friends of Hope Mills Library, a committee established in 1989 by Mayor Al Bradford in the amount of $23,638.81. An associated budget amendment will be presented at the next meeting, and consideration of approving the donation to be used to update fencing for an outdoor classroom park and authorizing the town manager to proceed. And I ask that that be added to New Business under, and be item B and C. Do we have any other additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, I have a special proclamation. It's where as Veterans' Day is the day America sets aside to thank and honor all those who served honorably in our nation's military, and where as Veterans' Day is a day to honor veterans, to acknowledge that their contributions to our national security are appreciated, and to underscore the fact that all those who have served have sacrificed and done their duty, where as America is greatly indebted to those who have sacrificed for the liberty and security of our country, where as tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces, and hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, where as the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by the people of the United States, and where as armed force members have been unrelenting in battle, unwavering in loyalty, and unmatched in honor, and have demonstrated that freedom is the most powerful force on earth. Where as VFW Post 10-630 and Auxiliary have coordinated with other veterans and civic organizations in the Hope Mills area to provide a special ceremony of remembrance. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, November the 11th, 2020, as Veterans' Day in the Town of Hope Mills, in tribute to the veterans of all wars, the living, the disabled, the dead, and urge all citizens to join in the expression of appreciation to the many veterans that our community have given so much in our behalf in times of both war and peace. And I believe the 11th is on Wednesday.
Yes, it is.
So I'm going to change this proclamation to Wednesday. Next, we have a non-public hearing. It's case number 20-098, Consideration of the Fountain Point Zero Lot Line Subdivision Review. Hope Mills subdivision ordinance, zoned R10, R6, acreage 28.12, plus or minus, located 5345 Fountain Lane. It's been submitted by Charles Gardner, CEO Fountain Point LLC, owners, and Lori Epler, CEO Larry King and Associates Surveyor. And I'll turn it over at this time to Mr. McLaughlin. And this is a non-public hearing, so it's just a presentation to our board.
That's correct. And I apologize, because we have our town attorney, his assistant streaming, I don't have the presentation up, but everything that I'm talking about is located in your package.
And I need to let you know that Michael Cohen, the name that is up there, is sitting in for Dan Hartsough this evening, who had a prior commitment somewhere that he had to be. So thank you, Mr. Cohen, for being with us.
As stated, this is case 20-098 for Zero Lot Line Subdivision Review. Addressed as 5345 Fountain Lane, the subject property is a 28.12 acre parcel located along Hope Mills Lake. The site has approximately 38.10 feet of lot frontage along Fountain Lane, and is zoned under the R6 and R10 single-family residential districts. The property is bordered to the west by a CSX railroad, and to the east by Hope Mills Lake, with the 100-year floodplain located in the northern portion of the lot. Fountain Lane is a town of Hope Mills maintained street. In terms of the proposed development, the developer is seeking to subdivide the subject property into 30 single-family residential lots. Access to the site will be extended through this development off of Fountain Lane via 50-foot public right-of-way in compliance with the Town of Hope Mills Standards and Specializations Manual. Proposed lot sizes range from 17,000 square feet to 1.12 acres in size, in compliance with district standards in the R10 and R6 residential districts. There are two common areas proposed on both sides of Fountain Lane towards the midpoint area of the development, with four-foot sidewalks proposed along both sides, also in compliance with our subdivision ordinance. The proposed Zero Lot Line subdivision complies with development standards outlined in the Town of Hope Mills subdivision ordinance. As such, staff recommendation is for approvals. The site plan showing the layout of the lots is located in your package. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Okay, at this time, do we have any commissioners have questions?
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ray.
How are we going to handle the traffic from Fountain Lane in and out at Hope Mills Road?
In a nutshell, anything that happens at Fountain Lane to Hope Mills Road is under the jurisdiction of DOT. I think the developers have reached out to DOT. They have not indicated that they have any issues with the increased traffic. What the burden of proof that's before you this evening is whether or not the property that's being subdivided into 30 lots is in compliance with the subdivision regulations of our ordinance. And based on my analysis, it actually is.
Thank you.
Do I have any other questions?
I got one question, Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Bell Flowers.
Just a clarification of item number 24. When the note says the SFHA shown in the preliminary plant does not appear to be shown correctly to the current SFHA 100 flood location, survey must verify the currently approved location have the correct SFHA reflected on the filed plant.
From my understanding, if you recall, they actually deferred this case from the first time it appeared on the agenda. If I'm not mistaken, I think the map you see actually is the corrected version. Even if not, they do have to correct that for their submission to our stormwater department. So that ordinance would govern, in compliance with that regulation.
Well, that was the question that I had, and it's probably more toward Beth to answer.
The map that's shown in your packet is actually the correct floodplain map. They corrected it before they submitted the last time. So what you're looking at is correct.
Okay. Thanks, Beth, for answering. That was the only question I had, Mayor, was just clarification for that note.
That's correct.
Okay. Any action to be taken?
Mayor, I will go ahead and make the motion while somebody else does.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Bell Flowers.
Make the motion to approve case number 20-098, Consideration of the Fountain Point Zero Lot Line Subdivision Review. Hope Mills subdivision ordinance, zoned R10 on R6, acreage 28.12 acreage, plus or minus, located at 5345 Fountain Lane, submitted by Charles Gardner, CEO Fountain Point LLC, owners Lori Epler, CEO Larry King and Associates.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and seconds. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Public comments? Do we have anyone to sign up for this evening for public comments? No public comments this evening. Is there anything that you'd like moved from our consent agenda to our new business agenda, or do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as it is before you?
Motion to approve as is.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have, under Old Business, we have par four update. At this point, I'll turn it in to Mr. McLaughlin.
I'm not sure he has anything additional to add up in there on the agenda, but we've been asking for, tab eight, par four update.
Yes. Do you have anything more? Maybe since, maybe you should just tell us what the update is that we have in our agenda.
In a nutshell, I talk to them pretty regularly, and the last time I talked to them was last week, and they indicated that they have a meeting set this week to try to finalize what they're trying to do. Ultimately, nothing has changed in terms of the process. Once they are ready for that, those options to be viewed, we set up a committee meeting with the Goffview Gateway Committee, which includes DOT. So ultimately, once that committee meeting is held, then you guys should not be in a position to have to consider it until a recommendation from that committee comes out of it. With DOT being a part of that committee, that's very crucial, being that the entrance is off of Goffview, they're going to be at the table seeing what that design is. But at this time, as soon as they notify us that they're ready for that committee meeting to be reconvened, then we'll do so at that time.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One more time, I'm going to make a motion that we permanently close Crampton Road.
Okay. I have a...
Well, from my understanding, the last time this came up, I was under the impression that you guys took a position that we would not do that until the actual recommendation came from the committee, but I serve with the pleasure of the board.
Well, I second, I'll second the motion, because I have a question about it.
Okay. Commissioner Bell Flowers, do you have a question you have?
If the three options that are being considered from the developer and the engineer, if the three options do not include the Crampton Road stub, as I believe that's what I'm reading, then I would like to ask why we don't approve the resolution to permanently close Crampton Road? If the three options do not at all show any reference to that stub, why not close it permanently?
One thing I want to make very clear is that the answer is the same. We discussed this before. Crampton Road was not an option at that time. Crampton Road is still technically not a design option I'm seeing, but what we indicated at that time previously was that the developers I'm used to dealing with, they want to at least see that they are heading towards an approval. So in my opinion, the prudent thing to do is to have you guys vote on the closure of Crampton when that recommendation comes from the Goffview Committee. At that time, I think the developer would be okay with supporting the closure of Crampton, because at that point, he's asking you guys for approval of his project without Crampton. We haven't gotten there yet. So I'm not aware of a developer who would basically move forward closing this before we even have it on the board's agenda for the approval of the project. I think the approval of the project and consideration by the board should come with the recommendation to close Crampton. So right now, I think it's premature when we're in the conversation or having negotiations for the design. It's not that I'm in opposition to it. It's not that I don't think developers are in opposition to it, but I do think, from my experience with developers, they want to make sure that the design is finalized and moving forward before they want to move in that direction.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, what concerns me about this, if that road ends up being Crampton Road entrance, then the other developer in the back of there, I mean, they've already got 400 and some households that are, would be affected in some way, shape, or form by Crampton Road being open with all the extra traffic and trash. If the other developer decides to use that, which I'm sure he can, because it would be an open street then, then that would really add on to their traffic problems over there. So that's the thing that I'm trying to look at, that I'd like to see it closed.
And I understand that. I think at this stage, that's purely speculative. I don't have a final design before you, so right now...
And they would, and the board would approve the final design.
That's correct.
So that, it has to be brought back to the board for approval. So it's not something that's going to happen until the site plan comes back to this board for approval, and that would be...
That is great. The way we have it set up, it can't come back to you guys until it goes to the committee. It can't be approved until you guys approve it. That's the system of controls and checks and balances that we do have. I'm just simply saying, let the committee look at the design, let the committee approve the design, let the committee give the recommendation of the closure of Crampton, where you have the town, you have the developer, and you have the community standing in front of you together, all recommending approval of the project and the closure of Crampton when it's not needed anymore. That's the only thing I'm talking about.
And the community member, former Commissioner Eddie Maynor, is in agreement and is willing to...
That is correct.
He's representing the community, and he's willing to, even as a committee member, they can decide that they don't like the plan. That's the understanding.
Exactly.
It's going to be brought to them, and he represents the committee. So if there's something about the plan that is not in accordance to what he believes the community wants, he's that community representative on that committee.
That's correct.
So that's the reasoning is the second step is added, is to make sure that all of it's covered before it comes before the board again for approval.
And I think that's a key piece. When we, when the board created a committee, we were very proactive in making sure that the community had a representative on the committee of their choosing. So again, the systems, the system of checks and balances that we have in place ensure that it can't come back to you guys until the committee gives it its blessing. And like I said, at that point, I think everyone will be okay with the closure, but we want to get to that point first.
Okay.
Mayor, just a point of clarification on the process, Chancellor, just to make sure that I understand the process.
The county, yeah.
Yeah. Just want to make sure on the record.
Now, just on the record, what Commissioner Bell Flowers is talking about is, we know that the actual design is going to change. So it goes to committee, but before it comes back to you guys, they do have to submit the revised site plan to the county for that to be locked in as well. So there is a process we have in place. It's not being compromised in any way, shape, or form, and I'll keep you guys updated as we progress.
And I appreciate that email, because that really was very, very clear on how you answered that, because I just had the questions about the process. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Okay. So at this time, the motion on the floor is a motion to close Crampton, and all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? So it continues to stay open until such time as we get the plan.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, under New Business, we have consideration of accepting a proposal from McAdams and authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement. The amount is not to exceed $41,135 for the provision of professional design services related to the splash pad at Municipal Park. Yes, sir. Turn it over to Mr. Morrison.
All right, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have. I think the agenda was routine and self-explanatory, but if you've got any questions, I'm here to answer anything you might, may have regarding the contract.
I do, Mayor.
Okay. Yes, sir.
If it's going to cost us $23,000 just for the McAdams Park, how much is the splash pad going to end up costing us?
What part was 23? The total amount is 42...
Okay, whatever I saw.
Well, the parameters I gave them was to design a splash pad that does not exceed the cost of $250,000. It'd be around $300,000 if we include contingency, which I did factor in contingency for the project. So no more than $300,000, including contingency. And that's based on splash pads that I have designed or managed in the past, and based on what Spring Lake has had built, which I did visit their splash pad about a month ago with specific questions. So that's about how much they pay for theirs. So that in mind, those are the parameters that I have McAdams to design our splash pad, based on the square footage and the amount of people that we think we're going to serve.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We'll have to put a parking lot in before this splash pad can be built. Is that correct?
Well, part of what they're going to be looking at is part of their concept. I don't know if we have to do a full parking lot, but we will have to make ADA provisions, which means ADA parking spaces, ADA access, and things of that nature. I've asked them to do a schematic first to let us, us and the planning review committee that Chancellor has, take a look at it before they move into design development documents. So there's a couple of options there. We think we may be to use some of what we have, but there's going to be a portion that's going to have to be paved as part of the project.
Thank you, Lamarcos. We can't develop the golf course till we make the first move. That would be the first move.
Absolutely.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Lamarcos, that was dead on there, because that was one of my questions back to McAdams' group, is if they would create an initial footprint schematic of exactly how this is going to lay in the park before we get deep into that design piece.
Yes, what I asked them to do, because the question, the question they posed to me is, Lamarcos, do you want us to just design a splash pad? We can definitely do that. Or would you like to look at it holistically from the parking lot, ADA, fencing, landscaping, and I answered the latter. We want a holistic approach to it, so we know what the full cost is, and even if we have to phase it, we know what the final product's going to look like.
And I think, Lamarcos, that's extremely important on the front end of this project, just to make sure that we phase it right, we're going to be able to fund it right, and it'll be able to go out to bid right.
Right. And what everybody may not know, but it's not just a splash pad, but they also have to look at stormwater, either doing another BMP, I know they call it something different now, but I can't think of the term now, Beth, sorry, or we can modify the existing. So we got to look at that. There's also things like geotech that we don't have, and I'm finding with a lot of our projects, we don't have neither as-built drawings or base plans. So those are a couple of things they got to do from the offset before we can get into schematic design.
Thank you, Lamarcos. One other thing, it's been, it's been a real pleasure to hang out the past couple of weeks with the Boneses.
Glad you like it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal from McAdams and authorize the town manager to execute an agreement not to exceed $41,135 for the professional design and the related services to Municipal Park for the splash pad.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, the item that I added to the agenda, I want to give just a little bit of explanation so you'll know. Back in March 1989, Mayor Al Bradford set up a committee of citizens to act as Friends of the Hope Mills Branch of the Coman County Library System. That group of citizens, that was the steering committee, and from that, the town actually donated the property and worked with the county commissioners for us to get our new library that is now, of course, it's been there since about 1992. But that committee that was set up, they had all sorts of tasks that they had to do, and one of those tasks was that they were money raisers, and they raised a good bit of money. They even raised the money to help pay for the land. The reason that this is important today is that there was money set aside that was put there, because what they were trying to do is put a clock at the library site. there, uh, because what they were trying to do is put a clock at the library site. DOT would not approve it in the right of way because DOT at that time knew they were going to widen Gulfview Road. And so they waited and they waited. The new library opened up, they used all the monies that they had planned. If you look inside the library, there's a big plaque on the wall that has the other members of the committee other than the steering committee that started. It grew to be a very large committee and most of the community was involved in the fundraising part and also in the, the being involved, a volunteer in the library. It was just a unique partnership, uh, the kinds of things that, uh, we need to be doing now because it was so effective then. But what happened was, uh, Darce Luther at that time was the treasurer of the committee. The funds that were left over were put, uh, in the bank and they sat there from nineteen-eighty-nine until, uh, two thousand eighteen. And they were cheated to the state because what happened was it had just been sitting there and BB and T changed, uh, managers, changed people. And in, in one of these cases that things happened, uh, Darce Luther contacted me and we worked very diligently to try to get the funds released. Darce Luther, for those of you who don't know, this room is named after her and her husband. She was a commissioner too after her husband died. She was very involved in all sorts of committees and she was a member, uh, not only of this, uh, steering committee, but at that time she was the treasurer. She currently is, uh, in bedridden at Hope Mills Retirement Center. She's been there for the past, uh, at least two years. And so her goal was for this money to be used to benefit the Town of Hope Mills. And her request is that there's two stormwater ponds out there that as people walk in the walking path and people see them, uh, they look like they could possibly potentially be ponds, but they're really for stormwater feature. So what she's asked is the total amount of money for the town that's being donated to the town is twenty-three thousand, six hundred, thirty-eight dollars and eighty-one cent. And this money to be used to, uh, do, uh, some new fencing, take down the big tall chain link fence, do some new fencing, some benches, um, dedicated as the Friends of the Library, uh, park and, uh, outdoor classroom. And the goal is working with stormwater to have, uh, and with the library partnership, the library is going to, going to be a part of this, is that we can actually show environmentally what those stormwater ponds do, but we'd also have another, uh, pretty location there by the library that would be a part. Uh, so I'd like to ask you to consider approving the donation to be used to update the fencing for the outdoor classroom and also authorize the town manager to proceed because I really believe she's been, Darce Luther has been trying to work on this for well over a year and a half. And, uh, this would be really a nice thing to accomplish. And there are a few members, Doc Brower was president of the group or chairman of the group, and Doc Brower is currently in the Village Green Rest Home. Um, of course, Mayor Ad, Mayor, Mayor Al Bradford has passed away. Uh, a lot of the people on this committee, Marion Kinlaw, um, quite a few of them are no longer with us. So that's why it's important to her that this happens, uh, for the Town of Hope Mills.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation from Friends of Hope Mills Library and that the money for that, the twenty-three thousand, six hundred, thirty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents be used for improvements around the library area.
Thank you. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those...
Do you want to authorize the town manager to proceed?
Right.
I'm sorry. I didn't authorize the town manager to, uh, head the thing.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much. And I know that, uh, Ms. Luther will be excited to know that we're going to be moving forward on this. Uh, next we have, um, reports and information items. Do you have anything to add to your manager's report, ma'am?
Um, probably the only thing to add would be, um, as far as the keeping up with the Boneses, um, I'd like to add that the fire department won. So kudos to the fire department. They had an excellent display. So, that's it.
Okay. All right. Next we have our, um, our, of course, our regular meeting is, it'll be November sixteenth. Uh, next we have our committee liaison updates, and I'll start with Commissioner Edwards with appearance in mid-Carolina Council Government.
Um, the National Commission, they're still really working hard trying to get things lined up for what they want to do for Christmas. Um, they're still working on the lining of the Christmas trees. With COVID and all, they're really, um, limited what they can do. They're also working on updating the bows. And as far as mid-Carolina, we will not be having our Zoom meeting until December.
Okay. And next we have, um, Commissioner Legg with Historic Preservation and Rulak.
Uh, we haven't had anything with Rulak yet, but the Historical Preservation Committee held a special meeting on, uh, October twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty at the Thomas Campbell Oatman Memorial Church for the purpose of discussing their strategies, plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, one, once the plan has been finalized, the committee will make a formal submission to the Board of Commissioners for consideration during the budget season for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two year. The motions were approved. A motion was made that, and the committee voted and approved a motion to take the first step at hiring a consultant to start the process of officially designating the Thomas Campbell Oatman Memorial Chapel as a historical structure. The next motion was, and that was approved, the committee voted to approve a motion to hold a joint meeting with the Town of Hope Mills Appearance Committee so that the church can be included in the upcoming Hope Mills Festival of Lights and Christmas Celebration. The, the third motion was the committee voted and approved a motion to have the church open for viewing during the Festival of Lights Celebration. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Next we have Commissioner Marley with Veterans Affairs.
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, Veterans Affairs Committee did meet. Uh, they finalized their, uh, plans for the Veterans Day Ceremony. Uh, they will be having, having that ceremony on Wednesday, November eleventh at three P.M. Um, they are going to open it up, uh, for people to come. They had first talked about just doing a virtual, um, ceremony, but since things have changed and the governor's, uh, allowed more numbers for outdoor, it will be open. They are going to, uh, they're planning on having it, uh, streamed live as well. And they will be doing the, uh, Field of Honor. They'll be putting the flags out, um, that morning around nine A.M. So that, that's always a good, it's, it's always pretty to see all those flags out there, but, uh, please come out, support them. And, uh, I'm planning on being there and once again, Mayor, they, you know, they've requested you to be there as well.
I'll be there.
But, um, Wednesday, November eleventh, three P.M.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next we have Mayor Prentem McCray with Parks and Rec and, uh, Air Quality Stakeholders and Prime Movers. Need to add those to your list.
Um, the Prime Movers will have their really first official meeting on this Thursday. We have not, the Air Quality Stakeholders Committee has not met, but they did send out a very detailed, um, survey. So I think they're doing a lot of restructuring. The Parks and Recs Committee, um, Lamarcos always does a great job of giving a detailed report. I would just like to point out too, I think everybody has said that the Boneses, Keeping Up with the Boneses was a really nice display. Um, the, the fall soccer season ended. They had a successful season. Um, basketball registration is still postponed and they do, Chanel Jones is the new programs and communications coordinator. So we'd like to welcome her onboard and they have a proposal for a virtual learning grant funding and announcement should be made earlier this month. But it's very detailed, but I just wanted to highlight those points. And that is all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I have, uh, first thing I have is the Mayor's Youth Leadership, and of course, they met tonight and, uh, we did it, uh, we had one member present that was chairperson and then we did it virtually. A great group, uh, the, they elected officers. The chairman is from Jack Britt High School's Tristan Sutherland. The first vice chair is Tiana Silva for Southview. And the second vice chair is Ricardo Teteo, and he's from Grace Creek. Great group. Their goal this year is to work on, uh, a litter campaign. Hope Mills beautiful and they've already, uh, uh, just kicked it off with a lot of neat ideas, uh, and looking forward to working with them, but it's a great group and they're, uh, members of, uh, they represent JRTC, Key Club, and SGA for the three high schools. And the goal is to show that as competitive as the three high schools are, that they can work together on a common good for Hope Mills. And we're excited that, um, these young people are willing to step up and do some leadership things for Hope Mills. Uh, the next thing that I have is, um, FAMPO, and I did give you a newsletter from FAMPO. We met, uh, this is our meeting, very lengthy meeting, but the reason I want to draw two things to your attention. One is that Joel Strickland, who was, uh, the director of FAMPO, his last day was Wednesday. He is now, uh, working in another local government. So we, it's kind of sad to lose Joel Strickland. Uh, on the inside, it does tell you the upcoming meeting date so that you'll have an idea. And it did, I was going to share with Dr. McCray, it does include Air Quality Stakeholders will not be meeting until January. The other thing I wanted to draw to the, to attention and I think that the project progress report, and that is if you notice looking at the descriptions of the projects, the, uh, future I-295 from south of U.S. four oh one to south of Service Road fourteen-hundred and replacement of bridge over number fourteen over Bones Creek, that's to be completed in twenty-two. But go down to the next one where it says future I-295 Federal Outer Loop from I-95 in Robinson County to south of Service Road Camden Road in Cumberland County. And they've got the, what, where they are now is, uh, is forty-six point sixty percent complete, looking at July twenty-two. And if you go out to, of course, our bridge on fifty-nine, um, they're saying that it should be, it's just about complete, but they're still doing work on the exits and the service lanes, uh, but it's due to be finished in March. If you go out Blacks Bridge Road, go to the end, turn, turn right and take a look, and you would be surprised how much happened, is happening out there on two ninety-five. Uh, it's amazing. So it's, it's moving quicker because those projects have been funded. And I think that was what I came away from my FAMPO meeting with the fact that, um, there's a lot happening that we don't realize because we're not out, far enough out to look at the, the way that they're actually, uh, working very diligently to get, um, I-295. And it will impact Hope Mills as we're already seeing it, uh, with the number of things happening close to those areas. Uh, the other thing I had was a tier one meeting. Uh, the tier one meeting, this time, um, we met and this was our core group. Uh, when we started this, uh, well over a year and a half ago, the, the tier one group was made up of a, a core group and then we added to that group. And so pretty much what we did this, um, this meeting was just talk about, uh, economic racism, how we can come up with a gap analysis and look for some models for success to improve, of course, um, and try to create ways that we can improve jobs and the economy, um, in our county. And, and again, some transformational successes that we're hoping as a group working together it can happen. Uh, and the other committee that I'm on, uh, the Federal Coman Economic Development Committee has not met. So that takes care of my committees. Staff comments? Do we have anything?
I would like to thank all of the board and committee members who helped me with the public service announcement. Um, I think everybody sort of went outside their comfort zone to participate and I was just really proud of them and, and of the result. And I'd also especially like to thank, um, Ms. Graver, who was the, is the chair of the, um, Board of Adjustments. And she and I kind of came up with the idea that this would be a good thing to do to out, to outreach to people. And please, if you have an interest, we still have, um, a couple of days that I'm accepting applications for Board of Adjustment, Historic Preservation Committee, Appearance Commission, and Parks and Recreation Committee. So any, any of the public out there, if you can't find the application on our website, give me a call and I'll help you with it. Thanks.
That was a great recruitment video. I really, I enjoyed it. That's a great, great exit, great way of letting people know what the committees do. Uh, Ms. Adams?
I'm not taking that, ma'am.
Okay. And Mr. Cohen, we appreciate you being here this evening.
I want one.
And we appreciate the Boy Scouts being here this evening also. Thank you for coming this evening. All right. Next, uh, we'll start with Commissioner Bellflowers. Do you have any comments this evening?
Just want to thank all the Boy Scouts for being here this evening and wish all the candidates the best of luck for tomorrow.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
I'd like to, um, mention about our town manager and accomplishments that she's made and the two new ribbons she got. Uh, would you please tell them what it was?
A what? A ribbon?
Uh, my two reserve champion ribbons this past weekend. Thank you.
We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Mayor Prentem?
Uh, I too would just like to remind everyone too, if you haven't already voted, to get out and vote tomorrow. And thank you for the Boy Scouts for coming. I'm a, uh, co-leader for a Girl Scout troop, so very, um, near and dear to my heart. And I think, and I did like the video. Um, Jane, I was looking for you Friday to tell you that. I thought it was a really good video. And thank you to all the volunteers, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Jane. Ms. Marley?
I believe everybody's pretty much covered it.
Commissioner Legg?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I enjoyed the video as well. Very good job. Um, uh, everybody stay safe this week, please. Don't forget to vote tomorrow. Uh, Ms. Adams, what you did is not expected out of most people. They don't expect it themselves. I've been there, done that with my girls and, uh, I know what a, a, a great feeling of pride that it is to be able to win the championship like that.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Cohen, thank you again, sir. And Boy Scouts, thank you. The pastor's already left, but I'll say thank you to him and may God bless all of you and keep you safe.
Thank you, sir. And again, we appreciate everyone being here, appreciate the members of our staff that are here this evening. Uh, and again, um, it's, we're hoping that, uh, things will change pretty soon and we'll be back to normal, but, uh, do make sure if you haven't voted, you vote tomorrow morning and then stay safe and, and I'll be with you. And do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to adjourn. Have a second.
Second.
And everyone said amen and let's go.
Amen.